All right, council members are about to join us, but we can do the pledge of allegiance and other things prior to that. So, do we have Nathan Olivares from the Advanced Learning Academy? Nathan, are you here? Nathan, come on down. Speak into the mic, we'll bring it down for you. Tell us what to do and we'll follow whatever you say. You got it? Okay, go ahead Nathan.
Put your right heart over your hand, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Nathan, if you can remain standing. Doug Harden, are you here, our police chaplain? Please go forward and please give us the invocation. Thank you Nathan, you did a good job.
Awesome. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much, Lord, for this opportunity to come before you, God, Father, knowing that it's your desire, Father, to be intently involved with your people, with your creation. God, throughout history, you've shown us, Lord, that it's not only your desire, Father, to watch over us and observe, but, God, you desire to be involved with your people. God, it's your promise to guide and direct us, Lord, as we acknowledge you in all of our ways. So, Lord, with that understanding of who you are and, Father, your great love for us, Father, we come and ask your blessing upon, Father, this meeting. That, God, we lift up the council to you, Lord, that you would be with them. Father, you would give them the wisdom and the courage, Lord, to serve your people well. God, that you would give them humility, God, and, Father, the understanding that you've put them in this place, Lord, for the good of the people. So, Lord, we trust, Lord, that you will be with them. You'll guide them and you'll direct them. And for the rest of those who will come and speak today, Lord, from these young men who are represented here today, to those who have been part of this community for many years, God, that as they come and share their concerns, Lord, the things that are upon their heart, Father, their hopes and dreams, Lord, and, Father, their desires for this community, God, that you would be with them as well. Father, that as they share those things, they would know that above anything else, Lord, you're watching and you hear, Father, and you're in control, that nobody gets in your way. So, Lord, we thank you for that. We thank you for this opportunity to come before you as a people and, Father, your desire to know us personally and to have a personal relationship with us through your son. So, Lord, we love you, we thank you, Father, for this time and this place, and we ask, Lord, that you would watch over us. We pray this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Mark A. Waldo, forensic specialist, one, from the police department, 20 years of service, please join me at this time. Standing to my right is Mark A. Waldo, and he began his career here in the Santa Police Department back in 1995. In 1997, he cross-strained in the forensic services identification lab. He was selected for a multi-agency Klandenstein sting operation in 2000, and then in 2006 through '09, he was selected for the incident command team as part of the Homeland Security Division. He then cross-strained further as a forensic arms unit in 2004 and was promoted to lead forensic specialist in 2013. Mark is the first in the Santa Police Department's history to be a board certified as a senior crime scene analyst through the International Association for Identification. Mark has completed over 1,800 hours of formalized training in a variety of forensic disciplines. He is a court-recognized expert in forensic evidence analysis, also crime scene investigations and shooting reconstruction expert. Mark has received numerous letters of commendation, but mostly, he was presented with the Santa Police Department's combination award. Mark has earned this award for his outstanding and exceptional work in creating and converting a surplus Santa Public Library bookmobile into the police department's first major crime scene vehicle at virtually no cost to the city. So that means we don't have the bookmobile anymore? So, all right, well, that's gone, but now we have the best crime scene vehicle at virtually no cost to the city. Mark is very involved in professional forensic associations. He holds the following positions: he's current chairman of the board and past president of the Southern California Association of Fingerprint Officers. He's also president of the California State Division of the International Association for Identification. You know, he is very proud to hold these positions because the last Santa Police Department representative to serve as presidents of these organizations was back in 1937 and back in 1951. And now you've got him, and you've got them both. Mark is married to his high school sweetheart, Michelle. They have, their daughters are Lily, Emma, and Ashley. Anybody here? They're right there, please stand up and be recognized. Says Mark enjoys spending quality time with his family, traveling with his family, and that he takes fingerprints of people at family dinners. I made that up, he doesn't, he didn't do that, but do you ever want to like say, "Hey, I want to take a few extra fingerprints today"? You do? Well, look, whether he's taking fingerprints or not, he's a true expert. It's very important when we're out in the community and we need, you know, an expert doing a crime scene investigation, to have somebody of the caliber, you know, the commitment, the work ethic, and the long, long experience of Mark A. Waldo. And so, it is my honor after 20 years, thank you, Ms. City Manager, to present this to you on behalf of the city council. Thank you for your fine work. Now I want to turn things over to Mayor Pro Tem Vince Sarmiento. Sandra Cervantes from Miniondas, are you here? Come on up, please come around, I'll turn things over to Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and so, my colleague, Councilman Martinez, is going to be joining me up here to make this presentation, and this is a special one, I actually have two back-to-back, but, and they're both kind of related because the first one is to recognize Miniondas, which is, it's an iconic periodical here in town, and probably one of the oldest in town. It's now 40 years that it's been in circulation here in town, and it's been one of the primary ways of communicating information to our community in the Spanish language. So, we've grown to rely on it for so many ways, and Sandra has had, has owned and operated Miniondas now for, is it the last three years? So, the last three years, and so she stepped up and realized this is such an important vehicle for us, that it really needed a special person, and even before Sandra's ownership of and operation of Miniondas, she was already well-known and doing a lot of things in the community. So, when we knew that she was going to take ownership of it and control of the newspaper, we were thrilled because Sandra has such a great reputation. She's a former president of the National Hispanic Real Estate Professionals, and it's a very, very large group of folks. It deals with home ownership, it deals with real estate issues, and it's a national organization, and for us to have somebody who was its president here in town was very important because she talked about issues that were very important to our community. And so, when she took over the newspaper, we knew she was going to come in with a very full resume of good work that she's done. But Miniondas is turning 40 years old, and so for many of us, when it started, it was kind of a thin paper, it didn't have a lot of, you know, information, it started just almost as a leaflet, and it would be dropped on people's, you know, doorsteps, and, you know, it evolved over time where it started, you know, having a sports section, then it started having a current events section, and then, what I remember, was there was a farandola section, which is, for those of you who are Spanish-language impaired, farandola is, you know, nightlife, is entertainment, is, you know, what's going on with celebrities, and we know in our community celebrities and fans of celebrities are just so interested in that news. So, Miniondas was the only way we could get a lot of that information, but let me tell you a little bit about what Miniondas has done and how important it is to our town. Miniondas has been a staple in our community, reporting local and national, international news relevant to the Latino-American population. The publication's been filling scrapbooks for 40 years now, and many of us will remember clipping a picture over the years of their soccer team and their businesses as well. Sandra is now the proud owner of Cervantes Publishing, as well as Miniondas, and one of the largest and oldest Hispanic-owned Spanish-language media outlets in Orange County. The great thing about it is, is that there's very few media outlets the size of Miniondas that's female-owned and that's Latina-owned. So, it's especially important that, you know, Sandra serves as a symbol to our community for that. Cervantes Publishing has taken up the task of modernizing the publication and bringing a whole new demographic of Spanish readers unveiling a digital phone app. So, what's that app? Because I know you've told me before, is it the Miniondas app?
Absolutely.
So, you punch it in, now you can get a lot of, you can get the entire information from Miniondas on your phone, and so...
It's a newspaper daily.
Yeah, and you can, and you're still pumping out the print press, right? So, that's important. Miniondas is at the front of community events such as Cinco de Mayo, health and wellness fairs, soccer events, they bring together community partners, and more than anything, it's served as a resource to our community. It thrives by reporting events, news, local content at the highest level, and has very good journalistic standards. Unfortunately, we see a lot of new papers come out, and, you know, with the advent of websites, you have blogs now, and a lot of them just aren't really as legitimate or well-informed and researched. Miniondas has always delivered good, accurate information, and it's always been at a very high level and at high standards. So, when folks read it, they can be assured that the content is objective, neutral, fair, and verified. So, those are things that for us are very important, but let me just read this special paragraph, which is important to me. "On a personal note, Sandra has a long history in Orange County. She immigrated to Santa Ana when she was eight years old from Mexico City. At the age of nine, she translated and negotiated her parents' first home here in Santa Ana," which many of us did, remember? We would sit down and try to read loan documents and mortgage documents when we were like six years old, trying to translate them, and, you know, it's hard to translate an encumbrance and a lien and different things like that, but we did our best, right? So, professionally, Sandra has had many successes in her life from owning a highly-successful real estate firm and investments, and now owning one of the largest and oldest Hispanic-owned Spanish-language media outlets in Orange County. I know that my colleague wants to say a few words on behalf of Sandra before we, and on behalf of Miniondas, before we turn the mic over to her, but Sandra, thank you so much for stepping up, taking over the newspaper that has such a long and really treasured history here in our city. We know that you service the whole county and a region, but we kind of take ownership of Miniondas because it was started here, it began here, and I think your highest readership is here. So, congratulations on turning 40. We hope that you're going to be turning 80 and coming and visiting us in the next 40 years and being with us and celebrating throughout the years with us. Okay, so, congratulations and thank you very much.
And I will be brief because I'm certain Sandra would like to make some remarks, but, you know, thank you Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento for allowing me to say a couple of words just on behalf of Sandra Cervantes and just who she is and the importance of her taking over Miniondas. And Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento was very articulate and eloquent when he talked about her history in the city of Santana. So, it was by no surprise that when Sandra stepped up to the plate to be the new owner of Miniondas, to us who are friends of hers, we were like, okay, this is just another venture of Sandra's, because this is what she does, and she's good at what she does. And so, it was, because she has a lot of energies, for those who meet her for the first time, you know, and these folks that have met me, like, whoa, lots of energy. She has a lot more energy than I do, for sure, and with all the work that she does. And so, I just wanted to, one, thank you, Sandra, for your entire commitment for the city of Santana. You know, a lot of folks don't know your history, you've been here for a very long time, and your commitment to always assuring that Latinos are celebrated. And so, when you took over as a woman-owner of a newspaper, that meant a lot to this community, and so I personally wanted to thank you. And as we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, as you know, we are celebrating September 15th to October 15th, it's important for us to recognize, and it's such a wonderful moment as we're celebrating 40 years, to recognize what Miniondas has done for the past 40 years. And I was chuckling and laughing when Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento mentioned, you know, that Sandra helped, you know, her parents buy their first home, I think, and many of you were chuckling as well, because we are also very familiar with that. I was raised by my great-grandmother, who didn't know English, and so certainly, when we would go to banks and other institutions, it was me, the five, six-year-old, you know, making all the decisions based on what my great-grandma said and signing her name, and so, you know, we all understand, you know, the culture of the Latino community, and more so Sandra, in being able to take over Miniondas. And as you celebrate the 40 years of Miniondas, please keep in mind the city of Santana and how we can be helpful, because your history and the history of Santana and Latinos and the great work that we've done here needs to be highlighted. And so, I just wanted to, again, thank you, Sandra, for your tireless work here in the Santa Ana community and in Orange County for what you've done. And with that being said, congratulations.
So, Miniondas, Miniondas is a name that you can trust, and I am so excited about it. It's one of the reasons that I did purchase, that acquisition came because people trust the information that is there. We have reporters, we have writers, we have people on our staff that have been there pretty much from day one, 40 years ago. Now, we all need a facelift sooner or later, sometimes we need a little bit of extra makeup, and sometimes we need a facelift, and Miniondas really needed a facelift. We needed an incredible website, we needed to be a daily digital newspaper that all of us could read. We needed to make sure that we reached out to 100% of the population, not just the people that waited to go ahead and touch it and feel it and read it in print, but we wanted to make sure that we can reach our kids and other people that, we're not going to go ahead and look for the printed version of Miniondas. So, we designed an application, an app, a phone app, so everybody can read Miniondas now, you can download it for free, whether you have an iPhone or whether you have an Android, it doesn't really matter. And as far as being anchored in Santa Ana, one of the things that I did is negotiate, since I negotiate very well, I negotiated that the Heritage Museum is going to archive Miniondas 40 years ago. So, we will never leave, this is our foundation, Santa Ana, thank you.
She doesn't want her proclamation, I guess, okay. I'll just take it home, I'll take it with me. But if you don't mind, if you'll indulge me, because Miniondas is a Spanish-language newspaper, I'd like to say, make the proclamation in Spanish, if you don't mind, so, Sandra, if you will also indulge me. De parte de la ciudad de Santana proclamamos y reconocemos a la revista y el periódico Miniondas celebrando su aniversario de 40 años aquí en la ciudad de Santana, reportando las noticias local, nacional e internacional a toda la población y el pueblo latino. Te reconocemos Sandra por ser la ejecutiva de parte de Miniondas y tenemos muchos otros muchos otros temas que podemos hablar aquí, pero de parte de un pueblo que te agradece y agradece al periódico por informarnos tantos años, porque muchas veces para nosotros que somos hispanos que no hablamos inglés y no entendemos el periódico en inglés ni las noticias, Miniondas ha servido de una manera un vehículo para informarnos de muchos temas bien importantes a nosotros. Entonces, yo sé que la gente de habla hispana en Santana te agradece de parte de nosotros y esta proclamación lo hacemos con mucho honor de parte de tus amigos aquí en la ciudad. Felicidades.
Una última cosita. Miniondas celebra 40 años y vamos a celebrar en grande en el OC Fair and Events Center con El Festival, que viene siendo El Festival. Ahorita van a escuchar un poquito más sobre ello, así que yo personalmente quiero invitarles a todos que vengan y nos acompañen a celebrar con Miniondas. Vamos a tener información cuando salgan para darles. Gracias a todos ustedes. Thank you, everybody.
Sandra. Oh, yes, Sandra really doesn't want to be up on the stage, but we're going to keep her here, no matter what. She stole a little bit of my thunder, but Gustavo, why don't you come up and join us? And this is very much, this next presentation is very much related, and as a result of Sandra's involvement in what I'm going to talk about, this El Festival that Sandra was referring to. What I did fail to mention before I introduce Gustavo Lopez a little bit more in detail, one thing I did forget to mention about Sandra is that she's on the Orange County Fair Board as well, as is our director of Parks and Recs and some other good friends as well. But Gustavo Lopez is the general manager and executive vice president of Universal Music Latin Entertainment. That's a very, very large organization that represents Latino artists, and he hangs, I'll tell you what, this is the kind of people Gustavo hangs out with, so he's, you know, he's coming down a notch by hanging out with us, but he hangs out with people like Juanes, Los Tigres del Norte, Jenny Rivera, when she was alive, Espinoza Paz, Enrique Iglesias, Alejandro Fernández, Juan Gabriel, just to name a few. So, he travels in good company, so we're really honored to have you here, Gustavo. And for being such a young guy, you know, he's done a lot, he's done a lot. So, I know he was recognized as, on Billboard magazines, as the prestigious 40 Under 40 list. So, you were one of those as well, for the political side, right, recently? So, I passed that a long time ago, so, you know, they wouldn't even look at me. But what Sandra was talking about, and the reason why we have Gustavo here representing Universal is that there's a really exciting event coming up that I, when I heard about it and Sandra told me about it, I got really excited. I hoped it was going to be in Santa Ana, maybe one day it will be, but it's in our neighbor, just to the other side of our city boundary, which is Costa Mesa, the Orange County Fairgrounds. And so, it's the first of its kind, it's a festival, they call it the El Festival for Latino, and it's going to be the first Latin cultural festival held on October 24th and 25th at the OC Fair and Events Center, where it's not just going to be music, but it's a two-day event where they're going to celebrate cultural diversity from Latin America, they're going to celebrate with music, food, arts, and it's going to be an entire experience. This is the first time this is being done anywhere. So, for it to be done right next door, and really, the people who are going to go to this event are going to be from Santa Ana. I mean, let's just face it, all the folks that are going to go there are going to be from here. So, we want to make sure that we are participating as much as possible, supporting as much as possible, attending it, because, again, it's going to be something that is going to be an attraction, an experience for many of our folks here. And so, this is the first time this will be showcased there. These are some of the stars that are going to be present at that and headlining. It's going to be a multi-genre, multi-generational lineup with 25 performers, more than 25 performers, including Enrique Iglesias, Juan Gabriel, Banda Arrolladora de Limón, Julián Álvarez, Gloria Trevi, just to name a few. So, look, I'd get my tickets now, are they available?
Yes, they're available.
So, look, go online, there must be a website, Gustavo's going to tell you about it in a little bit more, in a little bit, in a few minutes. He's a strategic thinker, innovator in Latin music sector, he's got 23 years of experience, so you must have started when you were like 15, and he leverages his expansive knowledge as a leader in music and working with a lot of those artists that I mentioned to you. Again, he was honored by Billboard magazine. Over the past 10 years, he's been actively involved in the development of Latin music and artists as a speaker at various conferences, including the ANA conferences, the Billboard Latin conferences, and the Digital Hollywood Conference. So, Gustavo, this isn't Hollywood, but this is Hollywood to the south. So, you know, this is the only thing in Orange County that's even close to Hollywood, and you're in it. This, you know, Santa Ana is it, this is the only urban area in the entire county, and this is where all the cultural diversity is, and this is where all the music lovers are. I think we all travel to the Nokia, we go to Staples, we go all over the place, because if you look at these venues, like the Honda Center, like, you know, the convention centers, people from Santa Ana are the ones buying the tickets. We're the ones who go support the performers, to go see those performers, so to have them right next door is a big, big bonus for us. So, tell us more about the event, tell us why we should all attend, and how important it is to our area here, and welcome to Santa Ana.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Hi, good afternoon. I'm not a mic guy, so I'm in the music business, but I don't sing, perform, or do any, many Hollywood things, by the way. Vincent, thank you for having me and for the kind words. On behalf of Universal Music, we're very excited to be in Santa Ana and be in the OC, celebrating this event. It is a, it's been a long time in the plans, we're now just two and a half weeks away, so we look forward to seeing everyone there. I think you guys are witnessing history, for sure, the quality of event, the types of artists, and the passion that we are putting behind this event is truly going to show on October 24th and 25th. The tickets are available at elfestival.com, Ticketmaster or Ticketon, so you can pretty much find them anywhere online. And we're going to have the ticket office at the OC Fair and Events Center available and open on Friday, the 23rd. So, I got to tell you that, you know, Sandra's been great, she's really the one that kind of started this whole process of my involvement with the community of Santa Ana. So, thank you, Miniondas. I started reading it just a month ago, but I feel like I've known you for 40 years already, so it's good, thank you for your support. And Michelle, thank you for having me as well. And again, on behalf of Universal Music, thank you, we look forward to seeing you there. Este va a ser un fin de semana impresionante de música, cultura, comida espectacular, y espero que puedan compartir con nosotros. Y una vez más gracias a la ciudad, a todos por darme esta oportunidad.
So, don't leave, Gus, Sandra's wanting to leave you, don't take, don't take the stage, leave the stage yet. So, this is like, you know, for those of you who go back to Woodstock, Lollapalooza, South by Southwest, you know, the Coachella, this is all that wrapped into a weekend over at the OC Fair and Events Ground, so go and attend. It's hopefully the first in a series of events that we're going to have, but this one's got to be successful, this one's going to be special, because I think that it's going to be in a great moment in time. I think we're partnering with Miniondas, partnering with us, and we all want us to have a good time. And as you said, it's a family event, so you can bring your kids, you can, it's not like a concert, you know, it's music and food and, you know, culture, and so all these different things wrapped up into one. So, let me give this to you, again, I'll say it in Spanish, just because it's so important, Gustavo. De parte de la ciudad de Santana te damos este reconocimiento para ti, a Universal y el Festival L, en reconocimiento del Festival, de la cultura latina, por todo tu esfuerzo por apoyar nuestra comunidad. Te felicitamos, muchas gracias.
That's my staff, all right, enough, guys.
Angie Mesco, if you could please come up, and if there's folks here from the Orange County Fire Orange County Fire Authority, please join her. Thank you.
Good evening. Before I present this proclamation, I'd like to take a moment to welcome our new Fire Chief, Dave Anderson, who's gonna be taking our former chief Devin's position now as our, our new chief. So welcome. Fire is a serious public safety concern on both a local and national level. Three out of five home fire deaths occur on properties that do not have working smoke alarms. According to the National Prevention Association, US Fire Departments responded to more than three hundred and sixty thousand home fires between 2007 and 2011. Unfortunately, more than two thousand five hundred people were killed in home fires in 2011. All Orange County residents are encouraged to install several smoke alarms in their homes. Testing of both battery and electrical wired smoke alarms will help prevent or decrease deaths. This year's theme for Fire Prevention Week is Hear the Beep Where You Sleep. And I also would like to mention that on September 19th and 20th, from nine AM to 3 PM, the OCFA, the American Red Cross, the San Ana Police Department, San Ana High School, Love San Ana Initiative, and community volunteers partnered to install free smoke alarms in neighborhood homes surrounding San Ana High School. A total of five hundred thirty-one smoke alarms were installed and residents of the neighborhood received fire safety and emergency evacuation education. It is my pleasure tonight to present this proclamation to Chief Anderson in, for the week of, let me see here, National Prevention Week. I'm not gonna read all the whereas, but I will mention some of them. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at the largest risk from fire. And whereas, in reported home fires, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in half. And whereas, three out of five home deaths result from fires in properties without smoking, without smoke alarms. And whereas, in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, alarms have batteries that are missing, disconnected, or dead. Fire Prevention Week, and, the, let's see here. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of San Ana do proclaim October 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge our residents to test their smoke alarms once a month by pushing the test button and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Orange County Fire Authority during Fire Prevention Week 2015. Thank you.
I'm gonna pass the mic over.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority, we thank you for this proclamation. This is a, is a very meaningful week. Back in 1871, there was a large fire called the Great Fire of Chicago. And hundreds of people died and thousands of people were displaced from their homes. And so this is the week back in 1871 where that fire occurred. And so we recognize it each and every year as a remembrance to those who died and the prevention efforts that we all have to be a part of. As the councilwoman mentioned, smoke alarms are a key component. That is mandatory for all of us to have inside our homes a working smoke alarm. Nationally, one in five homes don't have a working smoke alarm. And we believe in San Ana, that number could be much higher based upon some of our experiences. If you have a working smoke alarm, the chances of someone dying in a house fire are cut in half. So it's the cheapest $10 insurance you can put in your home and it's very easy to do so and you can protect you and your entire family. Have a smoke alarm installed inside each sleeping area, out in the common area, and on each level of your house. We even have smoke alarms for those that are deaf or hard of hearing. They have strobes and special alerting devices. We encourage you to test your smoke alarms each and every month by pushing the button and ensuring that it's functioning. And then have a plan with your family. Know what you're gonna do in order to get out. We have more information on the City of San Ana website along with the ocfa.org website. We encourage you to go there, get resources, and get an alarm installed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
If we can get our city attorney, I'll ask her in a moment if there's anything to report out of closed session. But seeing that she's not here at the moment, let's do the oath of office. I believe that's gonna be administered by the clerk of the council.
If I can have Mike Tardif, please join me up here.
I'm Mike Tardif. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
You know, Mike Tardif just joined the commission by swearing to take through the oath of office. It's gonna be the Historic Resource Commission. He's gonna go to a lot of meetings and I'm sure he's gonna do a great job. So thank you for your service, Mike. And congratulations. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, is there anything to be reported out of closed session? I mean, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, members of the public. We had a closed session on existing litigation this evening and direction was given to our legal counsel. We also had labor negotiations. Direction was given to your labor negotiator. The two public employee performance evaluations have been continued. And with respect to the item of anticipated litigation, I've received direction from the city council to release a document that has been requested under the California Public Records Act. And that's all that I have.
Alright, so with that, let me for a moment direct our attention to the consent counter and then I'll come back to public comment soon thereafter.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be abstaining on item number nineteen E as in Edward. Out of an abundance of caution, I believe that this is just a simp, this is simply a status report on the streetcar, but because I've abstained, Madam City Attorney, on other items related to the streetcar and its alignment running by some real property that I have a, I have an interest in, I'm gonna abstain from that.
Alright, so let's note that abstention. Any other items by councilmembers that wish to pull items or, or abstain? If not, let me pull, Madam Clerk, I believe we have one request for a speaker on, was that item twenty-five, twenty-five C? So let me pull twenty-five C because we have somebody from the audience that wishes to address us on it. If, if there are no other objections, I would entertain a motion on the balance.
I'm going to abstain on item thirty-one A.
Item thirty-one A for Councilmember Tina Hedo. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanna state that I'm a no, no vote on thirty-one A, thirty-one B, thirty-one C, and thirty-one D.
So please note that as well. Any other items? I would, go ahead, Councilmember Benavides.
I have a question and I neglected to, to ask the city attorney previously. Twenty-nine A, twenty-nine, yes, twenty-nine A is a payment for streetlights near, in my neighborhood, near my home. Is, is there any reason for me there to have to abstain on that item?
Yeah. Councilmember Benavides, because the conflict of interest rules have been, have changed with respect to the five-hundred-foot rule, then the question is whether you think these improvements could have an impact on the value of your property. I'd say that they, they may, and so I would advise you to recuse yourself on that basis.
Abstain from twenty-nine A, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, did you note that for the record, please?
Mayor, a quick question on thirty-one D.
Yes, go ahead. Question.
Thirty-one D, that is an existing, there is an existing Verizon Wireless Tower there already, correct? Okay, thank you.
Alright, so now I would entertain a motion on the balance.
So moved. Second.
Oh, we have a question? Go ahead.
No, just a comment, just that I'm a no on thirty-one C.
Okay, please note that, Madam Clerk. Do you have all that? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. On twenty-five C, we have, I pulled it a moment ago so we could discuss it separately. We have a speaker, but we have so many Blue Devil cards here, and we're gonna talk about, to the Blue Devils in a minute. And you know who you are. You're all standing up there. There's over twenty cards here, I think. Madam Clerk, I can't find twenty-one C. Do you know the name of that person or? Lionel Velazquez, please come forward. You wanna speak on twenty-five C? Do you need an interpreter? See? Alright, our interpreter back there, can you see I'm waving at you? Alright. Just hold on a minute. Lionel, maybe just put the other microphone down. Baje el otro micrófono, por favor. El otro. Or the clerk will do it. Gracias. Okay, you can go ahead and start. Adelante, por favor.
Gracias. Buenas, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Lionel Velazquez. Aquí soy organizador en nuestra señora de Guadalupe de Alja y soy voluntario este, en esta comunidad. Quiero darle las gracias a señor Vicente Sarmiento por estar siempre con nosotros, este, por muchos años ya. Este, gracias, este, por el servicio. Hemos trabajado durante ya treinta años en la comunidad y se han logrado muchos cambios. Gracias a todos ustedes. Gracias señor, a Miguel Pulido, por, por servir. Hemos, se han logrado muchos cambios. Entre ellos tenemos, ha disminuido las pandillas en nuestra comunidad. También se ha construido el Delhi Center. Gracias, gracias por ese esfuerzo de ustedes, también de la comunidad. Ah, y también se ha, ha logrado acomodar nuestras carreteras. Muchas gracias por ese, por ese trabajo hacia nosotros. Bueno, nuestra comunidad es muy bonita, pero también está creciendo día a día. Sigue creciendo y crecen nuestras necesidades, verdad? Diario caminamos por nuestras comunidades. Yo tengo viviendo ya quince años ahí. Y hemos visto que los, a los baños de nuestro parque, es demasiada gente la que hay ahorita que va a visitar los parques. Al menos tres, tres o cuatro días por semana se llena el parque bien, 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 este llenito y este, los baños son, son muy, muy reducidos. Ya necesitan una, ampliarse un poquito más y son, son inseguros para muchas de las familias, verdad? Este, hemos escuchado a muchos de los residentes que van al, al parque y hemos escuchado que, que no pueden ir al baño y tienen que andar molestando a veces a la, a la capilla, a la parroquia de nuestra señora Guadalupe de Alja y al, al Centro Comunitario este de Alja. Este, también, tenemos la gran necesidad de estacionamiento. Los estacionamientos del parque, este, necesitan la reparación. Y también, este, las canchas del, del parque necesitan también a acomodarse porque hemos escuchado algunos jóvenes que se han caído dentro de, de los, de las canchas de básquetbol. Entonces, a lo que está, lo que estoy aquí yo es para pedirles, para pedirles que en este excedente de, del presupuesto de la ciudad, que nos puedan ver para allá hacia nosotros, este, y nos puedan ayudar con este, estas necesidades que hoy presenta la, la comunidad. Seguimos caminando con la, este, en la comunidad y les hemos hablado de, del excedente que hay en la ciudad y lo que podemos lograr a, en la comunidad, los cambios que necesita la, la comunidad. Entonces, les pedimos a ustedes que por favor nos, nos voltien a ver para allá, este, en este caso, en estas necesidades que tenemos. Muchas gracias.
I'm Lionel Velazquez. I'm a volunteer with the Delhi Center. And I want to thank you first of all for everything you've done. Thank you, Mr. Sarmiento, for the years of service. You've been working with us. I've been in the community for thirty, thirty years and there have been many changes. So I wanted to thank you all for the, the support that you've given us, Mr. Pulido as well. There was, has been a lowering, lowering of the gang activity in the, in the area, in San Ana. And the Delhi Center was built, so thank you for all of that. The roads have been improved. Thank you for all of that work that you've done. Our community is beautiful, but it's also a growing community. And the needs are growing too. I've, I've been living in the community for fifteen years right there. And the restrooms in the park, in the area are used fully, the park has been used fully like three or four days out of the week. And the, the park is in full use and the restrooms are not well-maintained and they're not safe for the families. So the rest, I heard from the residents that they can't use the restrooms there all the time so they have to go to the, the church next door and they have to go to the Delhi Center to use the restrooms. So the parking there needs some repairs. The basketball courts need to be repaired as well. There've been some kids that have been injured there, so the basketball courts need to be repaired. And I'd like to ask that some of the surplus that the city has can be used to help us in these needs. We've walked the community, we've told them about the surplus, and we've asked what they wanted to see, and this is what they've told us. So please look at the needs that we have and help us as much as you can.
También, este, aquí tengo unas encuestas, son las peticiones para ustedes de la, de la comunidad. Son algunas, vamos a conseguir más. Y otra cosa también, la última es acerca de las luces del, del bike trail. Este, es muy insegura, la comunidad te está pidiendo, este, que se ilumine, eh, lo que es el bike, bike trail. Muchas gracias.
Okay, gracias, esta roja, gracias. Just to add, I have some surveys from the community. We'll, we'll gather more in the future. And also the lights from the bike trail, if you can look into that as well. The community asks for those to be repaired.
Okay, so with that, that was item twenty-five C. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. Now, we're done with the consent counter. What I wanna do is I have some public comments. I wanna take about, you know, a group of speakers now. We'll continue with the calendar and then a few more speakers. I have about twenty speakers from the San Ana Blue Devils. And Councilman Roman Reyna, I think, did a, a very successful negotiation, wouldn't you term it that? Because I think he, he got them to agree that you're all gonna stand up, but I believe there's gonna be about three or four speakers. So if you wanna go ahead and all stand up and, you know, come to the podium. And then, I don't know who the speakers are, so instead of reading everybody's names, I would prefer you just give me your name and, and, and that'll be entered in for the record as to who's gonna speak. So do you need translation or are we, we're good? Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Pulido and esteemed members of the council. Go ahead, guys. You're fine. As you can tell, we're a little nervous here just introducing, this is a local city basketball team that our city has produced. As a matter of fact, we're the only year-round program as far as youth basketball is concerned. There's a couple of them that only stretch out through the, the summer season, through the local travel seasons when school is out. But we are the only school, oh, the only, the only team who's active year-round.
For the record, what, give me your, your name, please.
My name's, I apologize. My name's Andres Fernandez.
Okay, you got that, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Please continue.
Yeah. Well, just a little bit of myself. I'm a senior over at Cal State Fullerton. Aside from coaching them, I also coach freshman basketball at Century High School. And I'm the assistant varsity coach at Century High School, all while being an avid tutor at Century High School. I'm an alumni from Century High School. And I played for what is now a legendary coach, Coach Coombs, who actually, Councilmember Roman Reyna here played for him over when he was at San Ana High School. And then I'm sure he will, he has nothing but great things to say about him as well. Just a little bit about what we do and what we're about. My My vision, I, I have two kids here specifically, who are twins, identical twins, there's, his older brother plays for me at the high school level, and I saw these kids playing recreational basketball, and what stood out was how driven they were, and how they had this insatiable hunger to succeed within them, and I just wanted to, to take these two kids and grab a set of similar individuals with the same kind of mentality, and show other cities that, you know what, yeah, we might not be from such an affluent area, you know, we may not, might not have all the resources that cities like Clint Beach or Cheston, or other cities do, but we're here to, to learn, we're here to better ourselves, and we're here to well-represent our city, and that's what we're all about. We're a nonprofit organization via AAU, and I know that they have some negative connotations as far as how they profit their stuff as well, but we don't profit any money whatsoever, just simply to help these kids out, get them off the streets, and we have some unbelievable kids here, standing behind me, and I'll introduce them as well, just a couple of the kids who are gonna speak, in addition with my assistant coaches. We have Luis Morano, who not only is a standout basketball player, but is an unbelievable soccer player. As a matter of fact, he, he got invited to play over at, in Spain, unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but he got that invitation to play over in Spain, and he's a standout soccer player in addition to basketball, and, and I'm really proud of him, and it's same, I just felt like I kinda wanted to toot his horn just a little bit, you know, he's well-deserved. One thing that, that I will say, I was here about eight, nine years ago, in front of you, sir Mayor, Mayor Pulido, along with my teammates, and we were known as the Santa Ana Bulls, and I remember those days where we had unbelievable support from the city, things were decent, we, we had gym time going around, and you recognized us for outstanding achievement and the athletic arena. Nowadays, we, we struggle a little bit as far as finding a place to practice, 'cause we're hard, we're, we're just hopping from park to park, whether it be Delhi Park, which the gentleman just spoke about previously, we have Centennial Park, El Salvador Park, Saddleback High School outdoor courts, and most recently, we're at Mile Square Park. And I, I, I'm all for it, I'm, I love being out there with the kids, helping them out, and I know we're at, just at parks, but we, we do have a, a couple of negative influences around them that I just kinda, you know, hopefully get them away from it, but as far as, excuse me? Okay, so, yeah, so he's having, I apologize for that, so I'll introduce, this is my assistant coach, Coach Javier Azul.
Thank you.
Hello, honorable councilman mayor, my name's Javier Mraz, I'm an assistant coach to Santa Ana Blue Devils. I've been with them for a couple of months, but I've really learned a lot of great things about them. I, I really wanna touch up on a few stuff about what the occurrence of our city, you know, I appreciate the Santa Ana Police Department and the hard work and dedication that they put in to keeping our city safe. Unfortunately, on Saturday night, we had a young man lose his life, and we don't really want that here in the city of Santa Ana. And so, would I, what, thanks to the, thanks to the help of Coach Andres, he asked me to help him out, and I really appreciate that, I'm very grateful for the opportunity that he gave me to help coach such a great basketball team. These guys work hard on and off the court, the bonds that they share with each other is something unbelievable. I played trouble ball myself back in the days, and I played on Moderna High School. I'm a graduate from class of 2012 from Moderna. I have one state championship from my junior year, and it's just, it's a very, it's a very great thing giving back to these kids. Like I mentioned before, you know, we don't really want kids to be out on the streets, you know, with all the negative influences, we want them out there with us, learning, you know, we wanna teach these kids to not just be great basketball players, but be great individuals, and it's just a, it's just a inspiring thing seeing these kids grow day by day, given that they're all on and off the court, and I just really want your support, I really want the council's support, I want the mayor's support, and I want the city's support behind us, so we could, we could achieve great things together. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to speak next?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Are you all having a hard time finding a place to practice? Is that what it is here in the city?
Yeah, so we, we tried to go through a district route with the nonprofit stuff, and we didn't get anybody, they were asking for a hundred dollars plus an hour, and so we couldn't practice anywhere.
Wait, 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 so you went through our Parks and Rec Department?
We, we, yeah, we did.
And you applied there?
Yeah.
And, okay, so what, what I think we should do is, I think we should refer them to our city manager, I'd like to set up a meeting with you, could, because, and I'm in Ward Six, add that, there's, there's space at John Adams, there's space at Godinez, there's space at, well, we don't have a joint use with Segestrum, but I'm sure there's a place, because we're not landlocked when it comes to basketball. I could see if you were a soccer team.
Right.
So, I mean, I, basically, I, I hear the messages that you, you need help here, and this council wants to help, so why don't we go ahead and do that?
Thank you.
Okay? If you, if you guys are.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Okay. Do you still want the other speakers, or you wanna just go ahead and do the meeting and? Go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
Experience, experience, come on.
Hi, my name's Rodrigo Ramirez, I love sports, my two favorite sports is? Huh?
Yeah, get real close to the mic. It only shocks you when you touch it.
I love both basketball and football. Growing up is pretty hard, because my dad was the only one working, my mom and dad were raising four boys and a girl. It wasn't easy for my dad to be paying the bills. My dad and my two brothers, my dad places both in sports, just stay out of trouble. The city and, the city of Santa Ana wasn't easy, especially because my neighborhood, there was a lot of crime still happening right now, like robbery, killing, shooting, rapists, mainly young kids involved in gang-related. I think the city of Santa Ana should provide us gym, because, like, outdoors, we especially experience people smoking marijuana, and we don't like that, 'cause the team is just trying to get better themselves, like, trying to get a career, like, go to college, and that's what we're all trying to do, get better, and that's what I think that the city of Santa Ana should provide us, gym time. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanna thank you once again, I don't wanna take too much time, I know there's a lot of people out here who wanna speak to you, but I do wanna thank you for your time, esteemed members, Mayor Pulido, it really goes without saying, we have great kids in the city of Santa Ana, and there is a lot of negative connotations as it is attached to Santa Ana, and we just wanna help get rid of that, and that, that's, that's what we're all about.
And we're all changing, and I appreciate it.
Take, take us up on that offer, though, meet with the city manager, Councilor Tina Hever, that, that offered to volunteer some time, and we'll, we'll figure this out.
Thank you.
And I wanna, I wanna go one-on-one against one of you guys, probably that guy right there, 'cause I, he and I are the same height, me and you, right here.
Don't underestimate him.
Get it on, get on, get it on film.
Remember multi boats, remember multi boats? You're gonna end up dunking you on yourself.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for coming down. Tyler Thomas, followed by Dora Lopez. Tyler, if Tyler isn't here, if Tyler was a part of that group, Dora Lopez, are you here? Come on down, followed by Janelle Hardy. Yeah, Janelle, just come sit at the, at the first row there, followed by Michael Facubian. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Pulido, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, councilmembers, and city manager. My name is Dora Lopez, I am a longtime Santa Ana resident. I am speaking on behalf of the Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhood Alliance and Community United for Environmental Justice. On October 1st, 2015, we hand delivered to your office a request for consideration, the allocation of budget surplus monies for lights, lampposts on the Pacific Electric Trail, Bike Trail. I am reading part of the letter, and the speaker after me will continue, will continue it. The Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhood Alliance enthusiastically requests the approval for funds to install lampposts, lights, along the Pacific Electric Trail from Testa to South Main. Residents from six surrounding neighborhoods, including Madison Park, East Side, Harrington Park, Wilshire Square, Delhi, and Memorial Park, totaling 53,000, and others throughout the city consistently walk the bike trail, either early in the morning or after work. During the early morning hours, it is still dark, when residents can be seen walking in groups with baseball bats and sticks for protection. Light, lights along the bike trail that function during dark hours are much needed for basic safety. From sunset to daybreak, the trail becomes a no-man's land, riddled with gang activity, muggings, and assaults. A well-lead trail is a win-win for all of us involved. Walkers will feel safer and encouraged to walk more. The city would send a strong message, reinforcing wellness, exercise, and promoting healthy behavior. The lights will demonstrate that we all care about safety on our bike trail, and very importantly, the residents continue to work in partnership with our elected officials and city manager for a healthier Santa Ana. Our community commitment and work for a better Santa Ana is strong and continues to be very present in our events and community engagement. Madison Park Neighborhood has been working on the bike trail for the past 10-plus years, such as planting of trees, numerous cleanups, and community events to promote health and exercise. Most recently, the successful Walkathon and Resource Fair on September 26, 2015, promoted the use of the bike trail by more than 500 youth and adult residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Janelle, go ahead.
Hello, council and Mayor Pulido. The Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhoods Alliance was founded in 2012 and brings together Madison Park, East Side, Harrington Park, and Wilshire Square neighborhoods to work on health, education, and safety for a better Santa Ana. We have partnerships with schools, churches, businesses, the South Main Street Merchants Association, and other neighborhood associations and community groups. Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhoods Alliance is actively engaged in residents taking ownership for fostering a building, fostering and building a safer, healthy, and productive environment. We recognize the power of the community to be actively engaged in leadership roles, creating solutions, impacting policy, and working in partnership with our electric, elected officials and city government. Approving safety lights on the bike trail will benefit thousands, and everyone wins. Together, we can light up the city with a beautiful and safer bike trail. Thank you for your consideration of this spending request, as you make very important decisions on the application of the city's surplus monies. Kindest regards, Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhoods Alliance. We would like to invite you to walk or ride the Pacific Electric Trail with us, then you can see for yourself the need for safety lighting on the bike trail, and be prepared for the many greetings of Buenos dias along the way. The contact information I'll be giving to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Michael, if you're here, come on down, followed by Renee Guzman. Renee, you're ready, and after that, Steve Rocco.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel Michael Klubnikin. Lack of accountability, lack of oversight, and lack of enforcement is a formula for us to lose trust in the judiciary, and if that happens, that's a tremendous damage to the public trust. I'll give you an example, Ilya Seglin, he's not here, you can see, a Russian Jew immigrant, had his son, autistic son, that's the only thing he's guilty of, he gave birth to an autistic son, the DA, District Attorney, Tony Rakosk, maliciously stole him from his home, and you say, well, didn't he have a trial? Yes, he did. I was there, I was in the courtroom. Before, day before the trial, Ilya had no, no attorney, but 24 hours, he got a guy to fly in from Canada. I'm inside the courtroom, they wanted to go ahead with the trial. I says, wait a minute, he's coming, he's coming, you know, who am I? I'm not even part of the hearing, I'm not part of the family. I had to hold them up and say, they wanted to go with the trial. I stopped them, they finally got there. This is how they stole his conservatorship. At first, they steal his kid, now they steal the conservatorship. It's not enough they took his kid, now this is how dirty the court is, and I'm not making this up, and Ilya would be here and he'd be saying the same thing. You say, well, wait a minute, didn't you get to participate in the court? No, I didn't. Weren't you prepared? Yes, I was, I had a whole thing, I could be cross-examined, no one would, you know, I, I would have, be credible witness. He had 30 other witnesses, did they participate? No. They took a picture, the plaintiff, the, you know, plaintiff attorneys took a picture of this, beep-beep, yeah, they took a picture of his sons, woo-woo, and they said, well, wait a minute, we can't have this on public thing, we gotta have a closed hearing, so I get kicked out, and all his witnesses don't get to participate. The public defender before the trial comes up and says, I'm gonna defend you, you're gonna be the conservator, but after, you know, they get in the courtroom, he capitulates. Ilya didn't have a blanking prayer in a courtroom, and he's come up here, he's asked for your help, it's out of jurisdiction, he goes to the Irvine City Council, Ilya lives out of their jurisdiction, he goes to the Board of Supervisors, out of their jurisdiction. Today, the Board of Supervisors voted on a ethics commission, yeah, quite a, you know, contradiction there, and a conundrum. Ethics, you know, the Board of Supervisors is running so many illegal things, they circle the raggons around their cronies, and they put their self-interest above their accounting, and that is gonna cost, because you guys are one of 34 cities, and the shenanigans they're doing at the Board of Supervisors, we're gonna reap from.
Thank you, Michael. Renee, followed by Steve, followed by Lionel Rodriguez.
Good evening, city councilmembers, Mayor Pulido, and all, involved. My name is Renee Guzman, I've been a resident of Santa Ana for 44 years. I'm not a native Californian, but I became one, and I come to you with this problem that I've encountered in the last five years or so. I am a professional tennis coach and professional tennis player. A couple of years back, you, Mayor Pulido, proclaimed tennis city, Santa Ana, welcome. It worked out real good, we started at Santa Ana College. I took 42 senior citizens from both senior centers and started a class with another instructor, myself, Manuel Helpney. So, we were there at Santa Ana College all this time, up to five years ago. Santa Ana City College closed the courts, they were to be demolished, so far, they haven't been demolished, they worked around, but the courts are not available for public use. My problem is, I don't have a court that, that I can use publicly in the morning, between the hours of 9:00 to 11:00. I've gone to other parks, I've gone to the city, I've gone to Parks and Rec, and we don't have. Another thing, we're at school, when it was remodeled, we were promised that we would have two tennis courts available, for school and public. Well, when all this finished, we only have one, and it became zero, because they use it for hockey. I don't have a place where I can take my seniors, I am now involved with a senior center here in Santa Ana on Ross and Third, and we don't have any place with the seniors who would like to go exercise. Please help me with this problem.
We wanna help you, Renee, let me first turn it over to Mayor Protem, Vince Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe, Mr. City Manager, on our proposed budget, or allocation for some of the funds that are gonna be available, I believe there's some repairs that are gonna be addressed towards existing courts on both Cabrillo, Sandpoint, so maybe there's a way that we can work in as efforts, 'cause I'd love to see the seniors play on city courts.
Sure.
And we'd love to see those courts, number one, functioning, but they've had some, you know, they've had some diverse, deferred maintenance issues, so they are slated to be addressed, so I'm hoping that what you can do is coordinate with our Parks and Recs Director, and see how that time, especially during the morning, the courts aren't being used. Many of them get used during the weekend hours, you know this, and in the afternoon and evenings, but in the morning, they're completely dormant, 'cause a lot of the kids are at school.
Right.
So it's a perfect time for the seniors to use it, so that's, that's my understanding correct, Mr. City Manager?
No, we tried to, we tried the morning, but most of the seniors would like to do it, but there are no courts open, available for public use.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. The, the goal is to, of course, we have to get council approval, but to have all the courts in working condition, so, like the other individuals, we'll meet with you and the Parks Director.
How many players do you have, Renee? How many players do you have, Renee?
Pardon?
How many people do you have playing?
Right now, I have 13 people that I take every morning to City of Orange and practice at a park, because there's nothing open here. The seniors have been asking me now since I belong...
So we had courts, you'd have way more players.
Yes, we do.
You know, the other...
But they're not available for open play.
We'll figure it out, Renee. Go ahead.
Yeah, talk to our Parks and Recs Director, because you should also have access to the Cabrillo Tennis Center, and those are courts that should be available. So in any event, let's talk to him, let's make sure that he gets some...
Certainly, I'd love to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Renee. Yes, go ahead.
Parks Santiago has tennis courts, I believe, and I don't know that anyone's using them during those hours, so that's something we might wanna look at.
You got the attention now, Harold Moet, he's coming in the back. Don't go without meeting with him, and we'll have him give us an update, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Rocco, followed by Leonel Rodriguez.
Just to summarize, Dr. Villanueva spoke to this City Council a couple of weeks ago about the recall and about Mayor Polito, and was given only two minutes, so it seems like some people get as much time as they want and others don't. But as far as the recall goes, you're allowed 200 words, but as far as Villanueva's concerned, she only needs one word for the recall for Polito and Rakosk, and that word is murder. You have blood on your hands, Mr. Polito, and I don't wanna call you mister. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke to the Board of Supervisors for the first time, and I was surprised that there were three other speakers who spoke about almost the same thing which I did. And that's this wonderful partnership between the City of Santa Ana Police and county agencies such as the Public Guarding, Public Administrator, Mental Health Unit, Public Defender's Office, and of course, what does the Santa Ana Police Department have to do with this? My home was invaded over half a dozen times, over half a dozen times, and with county agencies with the Santa Ana Police. What does the Santa Ana Police have to do with the county agencies like that? People that just wanna take your property, take your life, kill you eventually, and we're talking about mass murder in Orange County? So I keep my slate mailers, and this one is from one of the past elections, Mr. Polito, and you're standing in front of a police car. Why? This one is another slate mailer for Polito and Tina Harrow, and there's 10 cops behind you. Why? Are you in somebody's pocket, or is somebody else's in their pocket? Who controls who? Is it, what kind of partnership is this? That people's lives are endangered, that they're murdered? Like I said, there were three other people who spoke at the Board of Supervisors, Ethics Committee, I was there too. Shirley Grindel, who I know and I had a seminar with, delusional. You want the Board of Supervisors, who are corrupt, to figure out that other people are corrupt as well? I don't think so. Let, you know, Paul Walters is here with Mayor Polito here too. Let's talk about a scam here. Let's see, we're going to appoint him City Manager, give him an outrageous salary, and then we're going to fire him. Then we have to buy his contract out, name the police department after him, and he's a happy camper. How many cases have been covered up by the Santa Ana Police Department? How many people are dead? My neighborhood has been inundated by the police department in my quiet little neighborhood in northeast Santa Ana, where those three Mexican girls were killed by a drunken black driver. Huh? You talk about Spanish-language newspapers. Let me tell you something, your recall has never been included, not even one word, except for Excelsior.
Thank you. The light is red.
Talk to you again.
Leonel Rodriguez, followed by Nancy Mejia. And Nancy, if you're here, please come on down, and after that, James Kendrick, if you could get ready to speak, you'll be right after Nancy. Go ahead, Nancy, after that, James Kendrick, then Alex Martinez, and we have three speakers after that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Mejia, and I'm here on behalf of the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities Collaborative.
Mr. Trump.
At the last council meeting, we presented recommendations for the allocation of the budget surplus funding, and I'm here to re-encourage all of you to put together a plan that prioritizes health and equity. So far, we like that we have heard that you'd like to invest in things like homelessness, Parks and Recreation, including a master joint-use agreement, place-making grants, and community spaces such as El Centro Cultural de Mexico. These priorities align with what we have heard in the strategic plan to improve community health and the livability of neighborhoods throughout Santa Ana. And if we do it equitably, that means that we will prioritize the neighborhoods that for years have suffered disinvestment. While your final decision is very important to us, we want to remind you how important the process is in making that decision. For years, this community has asked this council to ensure that planning and decision-making processes are transparent, inclusive, and participatory. In fact, they asked for it so much that an ordinance had to be passed in 2012. Three years later, we have seen improvements in several planning processes, such as the strategic plan. We worked with the city to ensure wide community participation, inclusion of those with the least access, and we communicated consistently with staff about the process and what to expect along the way. The door for engagement shouldn't have closed there. As far as the budget surplus funding goes, we have heard many questions from the community, but we've had very few answers. Folks are asking questions like, "Has the decision been made about where the money's gonna be allocated?" And we've heard so far that there are priorities, but folks are not sure where those priorities are coming from. They're asking, "At what point was the community asked? Isn't this a budget surplus, and aren't we supposed to be a part of deciding where funding is going, if it's in our city?" So we're waiting to hear back from some of you. We requested meetings. We thank those of you that have met with us, including the City Manager. I know you were away, so we're hoping that we can get that meeting, so our questions can be answered. And so these questions, I just wanna reiterate, only contribute to further distrust in the city and how decisions are made. So if you don't engage the community in these discussions, you miss an opportunity to continue to build trust and build relationships with the community, and folks leave with a sensation of feeling that it's politics as usual. So we really hope that you are able to respond to our requests for meetings, that we can engage in conversations about how the funding will be prioritized.
Thank you. James Kendrick, followed by Alex Martinez.
Good morning, Mayor Polito and Council. Usually, you know, for me to come down, it has to be pretty important to me. Just four years, 11 months ago, I got hit by a car at Fourth and Broadway. I've had numerous meetings...
Jim, I was just talking about you yesterday.
Pardon?
I was just talking about you yesterday, as I was on Fourth and Broadway, talking about the fast traffic and how you've been asking us over and over again to look at that area.
I am tired of asking this council for help. In the last two and a half weeks, we've had five accidents, Fourth and Broadway, two at Fifth and Broadway, and two at Santa Ana Boulevard Detroit. Total of about 20 citizens, rather, Santa Ana residents or Orange County residents, were injured in these three intersections. I've asked, and asked, and asked. One lady was, had to be pulled out of a car, was pregnant nine months, and we don't know today if her baby lives alive or not. Enough is enough. We've asked, I've been to meetings upstairs on the eighth floor, I was told it had to, we were moving there. OC TA supposedly has downsized Broadway to not a secondary arterial, so we can put parking and slow the lanes down. I met with one of your, I call him Mr. T, track tackler, anyway, he told me things are moving forward. That's been over almost a year ago, it seems like now. But meanwhile, out of the blue, I see green stripes on Third Street with bicycle lanes. Thank you. They are being used. But again, time's up. Somebody is gone to die. And I've asked, I've asked, and asked, and asked. It's been, you know, going on almost five years. It doesn't take that long to make a decision. You're a council, you don't, I don't, you don't need any more studies. Action speaks louder than words. The other reason why I'm here, bus shelters. Our bus shelters in the city are a disgrace. You remove them on Bristol when you did your whitening, you didn't replace them, and the ones you did replace don't light up. We have a great marketing tool that our bus stops on our major arterials for advertising what's going on in the city. We don't use them.
Jim, let me give you a quick update, because we got some positive news, and we need to, we, see, the city does a bad job at really communicating some of the things that we're doing, but we received some grant funding, and we're in the process, working with our Public Works Director and our Planning Director and our Economic Development Director on moving forward with creating new shelters, that we received money, that we're moving in that process, so I would like for our staff, Fred, to give you that update and when those are gonna be installed. And as I was meeting yesterday with our new downtown liaison mayor, if you allow me, I think it's important, and I wanna highlight and call you out, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for that in advance, but I think it's important, you are a board member for the Orange County Transportation Authority, and you need to help us out. There's a culture there, for far too long, has made the City of Santa Ana a pass-through city, that has created a lot of safety problems for our city. Our staff, Fred, in particular, our Public Works Director, is doing a great job in trying to move us forward to a more safer city, and so whatever you can do to help us out and help our Public Works Director move as fast as we can to help alleviate some of the troubles that we're having, because I wanna tell you why we have the problems that we face over there, and, you know, I'm telling you, whoever hired that, that new downtown liaison, that young man is a...
You're out of time.
Let me tell you, Mr. Mayor.
I just have one more...
Mr. Mayor, no, no, just a minute.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Michelle.
Let me point, let me highlight something.
Try to rap, though, try to rap.
No, let me point something. When you look at Santa Ana Boulevard, to Broadway, to Second Street, there is no parking there. It is going fast. When you hit Third Street, there's parking on Broadway, and it slows down. So why didn't we slow down from Santa Ana Boulevard and Broadway to Fourth Street? It's going very quickly. It's an obvious, I'm not an engineer, but we need to take a look at that, and certainly it will help alleviate the problem.
Maybe our Public Works Director soon can give us, but look, this is not agenda, this is just general comment, so...
It's just a general comment, yeah, and wrapping, just wrapping, I'm sorry, but I just, on the end of that, I was gonna ask, 17th Street, the underpass of the 5 freeway, if any of you ever drive that at night, it's dangerous also for pedestrians, it's not well...
All right, Jim, thank you.
Mayor, just make sure that we're in public comment, make sure we stay in this part of, I'm sorry.
Okay, Alex Martinez, followed by...
I know, I know.
Josefina Hernandez. And then after that...
Good afternoon, Mayor Polito, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, and our council members. My name is Jonathan Hernandez. I'm a lifelong Santa Ana resident. I grew up in the Artisia Pillar neighborhood, and I was a part of the boxing club that we had on Calle Cuatro dating back to 2004, and I was there for about six to seven years, and I acquired my boxing skills and life skills that I was able to carry on throughout my career through the boxing club. And we wanted to bring some information to you guys now. I am the Executive Director of the Santana Unidos Boxing Club. We will continue to operate as a free nonprofit. These are some of our students. We currently have over 75 kids right now that we're training inside of our facility that are currently training in a parking lot right next door to the former facility that we occupied for over 45 years. It is sad for us to say, as of the 23rd of September, I'm sure most of you guys heard, we did have to leave the facility. In addition to that, we are happy to announce that we will continue operating, as we said, as a free nonprofit. We look to provide a free, year-round, after-school educational resource center to underprivileged and at-risk youth here in the City of Santa Ana. In addition to that, we seek to develop good citizenship through our demanding boxing program, with strong emphasis on community development through volunteer service and civic engagement with the kids that we work with. Now, through the development of our organization, we want to reach out to you guys, as we are in dire need of support at this juncture, with over 75 kids, over 10 that are licensed competitors. I'm going to introduce the second speaker, who is Alex Martinez. We're together, so that way he can share a couple words with you guys.
All right, this is my first time, so I might be a little bit nervous.
Bring up the mic a little bit, Alex.
All right. My name's Alex Martinez. I am 16 years old, and I am in the 11th grade. I am an unimmolated student. I, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're doing okay, keep going.
You know, it's been, it's been hard for me to be in the gym, you know? We've been training outside, we, all the kids, this is the family. We are all family. We're all in this together. I'm not here to brag about myself, I'm not here to, ah, man, this is really hard. It's been hard for us to train here at Santa Ana, but Santa Ana's given me a lot. Santa Ana Boxing Gym has given me a lot, shown me respect, not just towards the adults, but in life, you know, it showed me a lot of courage to not just, nobody could ever just step up in the ring, and to represent. Santa Ana Boxing Gym is a pleasure, 'cause when we go to the shows, people don't know us for losing, people know us for winning. People, we go up there, and they're, "Hey, Santa Ana, how are you guys?" "Hey, Santa..." We're getting known, not just around in California, we're getting known around the world. I have over 60 fights in amateur. I've been in this sport for eight years. Santa Ana, thank God, Santa Ana gave me the pleasure of going in and training at their I've been training there since I was eight years old, you know? I am ranked eight in the world. I've been going to national tournaments. I'll be training pro in March, I'm gonna be the youngest pro in Santa Ana, and I'm actually gonna be, hopefully, the future Mayweather, Pacquiao. We've been, we've been training three times a week with Pacquiao, so we are, we are ready, and we are ready to represent Santa Ana. You know, like I said, this gym has helped me, not just us, but around the kids here, to get out of the streets. You know, now there's, you see, Santa Ana is known for violence, for all that, but they don't know the good side. Santa Ana, we are united. We are united, we're all together, and that's why I like representing not Santa Ana, and not just me, but all my family members here. We're not blood, we're not blood families, but we train every day, we see each other every day, and of course, we can't, we can't have any of this without school. School is first, and we all have good grades, 'cause without this, we won't, we won't be here. And I just came here today to ask for all the support for the new nonprofit, Santa Ana Unidos Boxing Gym. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. If folks wanna help you guys out, do you have like a P.O. box or a phone number?
Yes, we do.
Please tell us.
Okay, so do you want us to do it here right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so our phone number is 714-818-8012. Our address is 300 West Second Street, 456, and that's 92701.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Take care, and thanks for coming down. Victor Beyan, I believe, and your final speaker.
Good to see you all again, Mr. City Manager. I'm here to invite you all to the opening night of our OC Film Fiesta Film Festival. It's our sixth year. The city was an important partner our first five years, and we received funds through the Fiesta Patrias event, and now we are our own organization, Media Art Santa Ana. We have a fiscal sponsor, and donations are tax-deductible. So for our opening night screening, we have Nosotros Los Nobles, which is the highest grossing comedy... grossing comedy in Mexican history. And we're actually closing with Like Water for Chocolate, which was the highest grossing Mexican film in American history for, for some time. We have a number of highlights, including that Edward James Olmos is coming on Sunday for the advanced screening of his new 3D animated movie, El Americano, the Movie, which deals with the green parrot. We have Peter Greenaway, famous director's new film, the OC premiere of Eisenstein in Guanajuato about Serge Eisenstein going to Guanajuato in 1931. We're very proud to be showing a lost 1928 silent film starring Dolores Del Rio, which was lost and they found one print in Czechoslovakia, sent it to the Library of Congress, they translated the intertitles. We're showing that with a brand-new live score by David Spear, who's nominated for an Academy Award, and Joseph Julian Gonzalez, who's, who's known for his Misa Asteca. We're doing a tribute to Orson Welles, this is his centennial, and he spent time in downtown Santa Ana, the Santora Building. He was Mary Derby to Hayworth, who had a gallery in the Santora. And it's also the 101st anniversary of Dolores Del Rio. Her centennial was last year, so we're really doing a spotlight on her. Man from Reno is a Japanese Latino mystery noir thriller set in, in San Francisco. We also have free morning films because we want to keep it accessible to the community at 11:00 a.m. The passes are very affordable at $50 for the whole festival. We want to encourage people to come in, in the morning from 11:00 to 11:00 and have a really great experience. Experience the downtown, see films, come back, you know, have dinner, lunch, come back. And really, so we're keeping passes affordable. And we're working with local restaurants for parties, with Kutsi, our opening night celebration is at Kutsi. And since we are now affiliated with nonprofit, you know, people can help by buying passes, tickets, or making donations at ocfilmfiesta.org. And one thing that we also need help with is because of the change in parking, if there are vouchers or, what's the word, validations available, we are at the Frida Cinema and that would greatly help. We're bringing in people, like I said, from all over the county. We have an article in The Register coming out, in The Weekly, in Miniondas, and it would greatly help us if the people coming to the festival had some assurance that they wouldn't be getting tickets because movies are generally two hours. And we do want to encourage people to come and have dinner and, and really, you know, see the great things that there are downtown. So hopefully you all can make it Friday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna direct our attention to item 65A. Would that be correct, Madam Clerk? We have more speakers on that item? Okay, 65A, I would entertain a motion if the council so desires. Motion and a second, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 65B?
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
If I can ask clarification, what day they would like to cancel in the summer of 2016?
Uh, Councilor Martinez, you were talking about that.
July or August. August 16th is my birthday, so I'm just playing, but that's just a joke because all of you guys like taking vacation in July. This year you guys took it in August, but I'm not sure for the school period if July or August is good for you guys of next year. So I'll let the educators decide.
Well, I'll tell you personally, July's better 'cause in August, kids are getting ready to go to school.
Correct, yeah, so July.
Thank you. So with that, um, so with that, we have quite a few speakers on 65B. This is Community Development Block Grant Funding Allocation Process. So let's go ahead and hear, hear from folks. Dr. Ana Jimenez, followed by Vatanga Peong from the Cambodia family. Dr. Ana, please come forward and, um, Vetana, if you could be nearby, and then Kyo Kunta here would be after that, who is a Cambodian translator. Please go ahead, Dr. Ana.
I'm gonna be stepping out, recusing myself from this, uh-
Process?
Exactly.
Okay.
One of the current funded-
Got it. Madam Clerk, did you note that? Please go, go ahead, Doc.
Good evening, City Council, Major, City Manager. As you all know me, I'm the Executive Director of the Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts Center, and we were fortunate to be chosen as one of the nonprofit organizations receiving the CDBG block grant this year. We're very excited, we're preparing our students. As you know, we've been in operation for 15 years and this is the first time that a CDBG block grant approves funds for our city youth to learn classical music. So it's really exciting and they're learning flute, clarinet, saxophone, violin, viola, so I'm very excited. And I would love for our organization to continue to, to expand into second year, which is next year, so we can continue to prepare our kids. We're creating a youth orchestra from right here, Santa Ana Youth. And just having that additional funds next year will get our kids to a higher level of performance and this is something unique. We're the only organization here in Santana that is doing this, so I'm very proud of it and I really appreciate for you to consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before the next speaker comes up from Cambodian family, let me have staff make a, a brief presentation.
I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Turn it over to the City Manager at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, we didn't interject earlier, but we do have a brief presentation with some options and we do have a staff recommendation, and Kelly Renner is gonna do a quick overview.
Yes, good evening, thank you, Mayor and City Council. So we're talking about the Community Development Block Grant Program. And just to recap the program and its purpose, it's a HUD program, it's for urban communities, providing, you know, housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities. And this is for persons of low and moderate income. This program's fairly flexible and we can use 15% for public services. The estimated allocation for fiscal year 2016, 2017 is, is just over $5 million. We actually are expecting a reduction of 2.5%. So for public service, our 15% cap is almost $800,000. As you can see, though, there's just over 331,000 available for nonprofits and then 463,000 available for city public services. We will be allocating some general fund to maintain the service levels for the city's public services, and that funding at 370,000 has been identified in, in the forecast to maintain the levels. So just to go through a couple of the funding options, the funding option number one, which is the staff recommendation, is to fund the current CDBG recipients from fiscal year 1516 for a second year. There are a couple of benefits to doing this. It addresses the learning curve for the nonprofit, projects sometimes start slower than expected, and it allows a nonprofit to better understand sort of what the expectations are with the federal regulations. There's a lot of record-keeping that goes on and, and there is some significant learning that takes place with that. It also allows nonprofits to enhance their programs and services. Sometimes things take time from startup to execution. This will allow them to have more time to focus on participants in our community. And it also allows nonprofits to leverage resources. Having these funds helps make them competitive for additional grant funding as well. Just to remind you who's currently funded, America on Track, Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana, Council on Aging, Human Options, KidWorks, Orange County Therapeutic Arts, Children's Therapeutic Arts Center, Public Law Center, the Cambodian Family, and Wise Place. Just to remind you of the city programs, we have the Police Department's PAL Program, Parks and Recreation, After-School Homework Help and Tutoring, and Parks and Recreation Senior Health and Nutrition Program. So the second option is similar to the, what was exercised last year. We'd conduct a new application process, basically release the online application, staff would review for eligibility, Community Redevelopment Housing Commission would rate and screen the applicants and provide recommendations to City Council and of course, City Council with a final consideration for funding. The benefit of, of this is obviously it allows new people to come in and apply for the funds. Sample timelines there, we'd obviously get started right away if this was the option that was chosen, open the application, move through evaluations in December, and in January, go before the Community Redevelopment Housing Commission, and then on to this body City Council in March. And then the second, I'm sorry, the third option is really to conduct a modi, a modified process and get input from, from this body as to how they would like to proceed forward with the recommendations for this funding. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Kelly. First off, you know, I just want to thank you and your staff for the great work that you guys have done, and I, I had to agree with the staff recommendation, as I chair the FedTech, and this was brought to our attention, I think, as you mentioned, you know, we just started this process, I think giving a two-year process, and we do want to make revisions, so, you know, on the third year, we're probably gonna open this back up, but for, I think for the first two years as we just started this process, it's very important for us to have some consistency and, and for some of these grantees, it's the first time they've been awarded, so, you know, they're, they too are learning. And so I would like to move this item forward. I'm not sure if the speakers still want to speak, but I think, um, if I could get a second, we can-
Let, let me get a second, then let me talk to the speakers. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There are several speakers that all want to support the grant that we're about to approve. We have folks from the Cambodian Family, Boys and Girls Club, Council on Aging, two people on that, Naomi Juarez from Kids Work, Sofia Con, Claire Braburn, America on Track, Kathleen Bowman, I know you're here from Wise Place. All you guys are about to get money. You don't have to speak. If you come up and speak, I'm gonna let them decide, does anybody want to change anything? So does anybody want to speak? We're good. All right, so look, you're about to get money. You want to get, you want to speak?
I think maybe would be benefit one of the residents' top, state health program benefits them.
We're about to give you money.
We're about to give you the money, right.
When we give you money, you tell them how the program that you run benefits them. Okay? All right, with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, congratulations, motion passes unanimously. So with that, can we have Councilman Benavides come back into the room? This is time and place for a public hearing to consider approving a resolution to authorize negotiation for sale of property owned at 205 West Civic Center Drive. Madam Clerk, do I have any written communications?
I have not received any.
I'm gonna now open up the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address us on this item? The sale of property at 205 West Civic Center Drive. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for consideration.
Motion approved.
We have motion approved, we have a second. All second, or Councilor Martinez did as well. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, I believe Councilor Martina Heral made the motion, correct? Councilor Martina Heral. So with that, we have a unanimous vote. Eighty, uh, I believe, was that, are we on 85, uh-
Aye, Mayor.
A, so that is now Councilor Martinez, I believe.
Yes, thank you very quickly, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, I know our staff is fairly supportive of this item, I just wanted to bring it to your, your guys' attention. SCAG is moving on, we received about $3.1 million, this is a regional plan to move forward with, with an encouragement campaign in regards to traffic collisions. And so SCAG is doing a lot of the work and marketing materials that now the city of Santa Ana could definitely use, and I think that we should mirror what they're doing. We don't have to replicate and duplicate, and possibly we may also receive a mini grant to help buy the materials-
That'd be nice.
-that we implement that. So with that, I hope my colleagues-
Is there a motion for direction?
A motion for direction is to, again, to be-
I'd second it.
To support, be supportive.
Is everybody supportive? So unanimously, it passes unanimously. With that, I'm now gonna bring our, our attention to the Housing Authority meeting and, and request a motion for the consent counter, items one through three.
So moved, second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is our business items, annual license renewal for yardage systems. I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved, second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. I'm now gonna direct our attention and convene the successor agency meeting and entertain a motion on the consent counter, which is items one through four.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, you can pick one. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we come down to City Manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief, and members of the council. Two items, believe it or not, we're already getting started for next year's budget, and I want to make sure everybody knows that we will have a community budget meeting as part of our transparency and sunshine ordinance, and it'll be on October 22nd here in the council chambers, that's a Thursday at 6 o'clock. The second item is the water poster contest. We've done fantastic as a city. Thank you, Mayor, and council, and all our residents for all their work, but this is an opportunity to help do even better and involve our youth between ages of five and 18. Every drop counts, let's not waste it. A water conservation poster contest will be open to all Santa Ana youth ages five to 18, and the deadline for entries is December 4th, 2015. And the grand prize entry in each page of the three age categories will receive a Nintendo 3Ds, iPad Mini, or iPad, so we're very excited about this contest. Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
Thank you. And with that, council comments, Councilor Masup, please.
A quick question on the poster contest, the district knows about it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we're gonna do everything we can to outreach and we'll remind them again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I just want to thank everyone, especially the residents. I know we met in September, the 20% of water reduction, so we're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Reyna, please.
Sure, we'll definitely keep it brief like always. Conserve water as often as you possibly can, we're doing a fantastic job with it, although we're, we're not out of the, the trouble yet, so continue to conserve. Coming up next weekend is gonna be a high school leadership conference held at the Boys and Girls Club, a 10th semiannual, so if you have some time, come by and watch, come by and visit, participate, sign up your student. Halloween is coming up really soon, I know we have another meeting before that, so please organize community events in your neighborhood or shop Santa Ana to provide the candy, but definitely be safe out there. And with that, shop Santa Ana, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Think Councilor Reyna, you said you're going to be brief like always? I don't know that, it's always necessarily.
We realize it one year. I say that enough.
And, uh-
You did.
Just want to thank everybody who did come out to participate in a meeting tonight, members of the community, and I just want to encourage folks to continue to support local economy, local jobs, and shop and support local business and shop in Santana. With that, have a great evening.
We're on a roll. Councilor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, one, I have to disclose, you know, I was the representative for the California League of Cities that you guys appointed me last month, and I have to disclose that. I was in San Jose, even the staff didn't even remind me, but I reminded myself today. You know, I have to tell you, man, San Jose is a great city, amazing arts and culture, and, you know, I'll tell you that this probably was one of the best league conferences that I have attended in my nine years. The content, the keynote speaker, talking about millennials, and as we move forward with housing was quite amazing, standing room only, and so was very appreciative to, to be there and look forward to the continuing work that we do with the California League of Cities, and hopefully that our staff continue to engage as well as they move forward with their learning and the amazing work that we, we all can do together. Secondly, I wanted to make mention, we do have SOMOS coming up on November 8th, so we're not too far in wanting our staff, and I sent a reminder to them yesterday what our plan is for marketing and getting folks out there and informing them. What are we gonna do for the Open Streets event as that approaches so that we inform our community? And just wanting to make sure that my colleagues are fully aware that that date is fast approaching on November 8th. And then finally, tomorrow is National Walk to School Day, and I want to thank our police departments and our staff that will be out there with the Santa Ana High School District. I certainly will be out there at Romero School tomorrow at 7:40 in the morning. I've been a participant for the past nine years and it's something that we need to continue to encourage and work with our school district. We still have a lot of safety concerns with our children and we need to continue to monitor, you know, the situations at the schools, in particular, elementary schools, because those kids are, are much more vulnerable, and specifically where that school is at, we have a major arterial, which is Bristol, and so- which is bristle. And so it's my hope, if my colleagues are available, we will start the walk at seven forty in the morning at Romero Elementary School. And just want to have you all, continue, the residents, to make sure that we pay attention when we are driving near schools, to play close attention to children. Sometimes they do dart out that we're not really paying attention, and they come out, and we need to be very sensitive near the school areas. And with that being said, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martinez, aye, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask the city manager and Parks and Rec, as, as the chairman of PREY, I'd like to see if we can set up, put something on the agenda for the next PREY meeting in regards to communication with scheduling facilities and so forth. I think it's something we need to revisit.
Yes.
I appreciate that. Also, thank you very much, Council, or Councilmember Martinez, for remembering Teachers' Day. We had a great Teachers' Day. I know there's two teachers here, and it's just nice to, to have someone come out and, and thank teachers out there. And I think to all the teachers out there, you guys do a great job. We've been doing a lot with little these last few years because of the recession and so forth, but it doesn't take away from our, our, our goal to educate our, our children. I also wanted to disclose something. I was voted the most attractive council member here by my kids. And so, no, I'm just teasing. But anyhow.
Are you unanimous?
Had to pam a little bit, but that's all right. But anyhow, I just wanted to thank everyone. There was a great event where we were at the Hispanic One Hundred recently, and we were able to see a lot of our Santa Ana youth there that are being mentored in that program. And I think it's a wonderful program. It was great to see everyone there. A lot of energy, and I just wanted to thank everyone for attending.
Thank you. Councilman, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And very briefly as well, you know, as we, as we get close to that date that we're gonna have to allocate and, and decide what we're gonna do with some funds, and I, I hesitate to call it a surplus, but I do want to remind people that we need to manage our expectations as we go into that conversation. I've seen news articles about how money should be spent, who, you know, is more entitled than others. I just think it, it's sort of a misnomer, because if you think about the responsibilities and liabilities we have already, that money is a very small, small amount. And so I think if we looked at our unfunded liability, if we looked at some of the deferred maintenance, that totals, you know, sixty million just in unfunded, or deferred maintenance that we haven't addressed, we really need to communicate well and effectively to those that believe that this is like a money grab, and that's not what this is. And so I think that in our zest, to, to celebrate the fact that we do have some funds available to address things that haven't been addressed in many years, we didn't do as effective a job to explain this is really a drop in the bucket for, because for many years, a lot of things went unaddressed. And so this may help us cure some of that and address some of that, but it's not gonna come anywhere near a surplus. And I think a surplus is when you've taken care of all your, you know, deferred maintenance, all your liability exposure's been addressed, services are up to par, and, you know, we're completely out of the woods on, on every level, and that's just not the case. So I hope everybody will understand that there's some very, very important, basic needs that we need to address with these funds. And I'm very, you know, grateful that we have them, but, you know, we shouldn't consider this free money. We shouldn't consider this, you know, excess money. What it is, it's money that we need to use to address some baseline needs that we have here in the city. So let's go into it with a realistic view, and let's not, you know, look at this or label it and define it something other than what it is, which is monies that were, that should have been spent previously on things, on needs that we have. So with that, I hate to be the, you know, the, the downer on this, but looking at it more and more, it's just more of a realistic view of things. So with that, I hope my colleagues will make very sound, rational decisions when it comes to deciding on that, on that limited funding. But with that, I'll wish everybody a good night.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just have two items, and unfortunately, they both involved wonderful people that I believe gave a lot to the city, and now unfortunately, they've left us. One was John DeBaul. He lived here in Santa Ana for many years in Floral Park, and I believe he was a big part of the Renaissance and, and the arts and culture movement here in the city. He also had a company called Jad Tech, which was in the alarm business and is very large here in Santa Ana. But additionally to that, you know, he just was involved in a lot of things, like a twin piano concert that he put together with a very, very well-renowned ragtime pianist, and they performed it over at the Sagerstrom Concert Hall here recently. You know, he was loved by many aspects of the community, and he is survived by his daughter, his, you know, wife Joan, two children, and four grandchildren. The other person that passed away, and this is more tragic, because John was seventy-nine, but this other person, Agustín Perez Sosa, he was only twenty-five. He worked for a west coast arborist in our city, and just ten days after his twenty-fifth birthday, he was struck by a motorist on Seventeenth and Fairview as he was removing cones after having worked on a job. And, you know, fortunately, through the good work of our police chief on our police department, we were able to apprehend a suspect, and all that is now being pursued. But, you know, Agustín now has left us, and he leaves behind a, a wife, family members, and a ten-year-old daughter. So, you know, we all have to, you know, hug each other real often, and our kids, and family members, and friends, because, and drive safely. Look, look at this, you know, young man, twenty-five years of age, and, and now, you know, we're here, you know, closing in his honor. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.